Good afternoon, this is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners for 10 April, April 10th, 2018. I'm Commissioner Bud Blake, Chair of the Board this year. I'd like to start off by doing some introductions. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards, to my right is Commissioner John Hutchings, to his right is Whitney Persall, the interim County Clerk of Board. To her right is the County Manager, Ramiro Chavez. To his right is Robin Campbell, the Budget Officer and Assistant County Manager. And to her right is Elizabeth Petrich, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney. With that in mind, I'll ask Commissioner Hutchings to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, I'll ask if there's an approval for today's agenda?
I move to approve Tuesday, April 10, 2018, agenda.
Second?
We move to second to approve Tuesday, April 10th, 2018, agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Next, I have the Board Meeting Minutes for April 3rd, 2018. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Board Meeting Minutes from April 3rd, 2018.
Second?
We move to second to approve the Board Meeting Minutes for April 3rd, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries as well. We have a really good agenda today, and I'd like to start off with the presentation portion of the agenda. And with that in mind, we have the National Equal Pay Proclamation. This Board, this Commission absolutely supports this proclamation and many things that go behind it. I'll ask the County Manager to do the introductions of our guests today.
Thank you, Commissioners. I would like to invite to the podium Ms. Heather Grubb. She's with the YWCA.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Hutchings, Edwards, and Blake, Thurston County staff, community members, and visitors. My name is Dr. Heather Grove, and I serve on the YWCA Advocacy Board for Olympia. I'm a labor economist, and I'm a professor at St. Martin's University. On behalf of YWCA Olympia, Zonta Club of Olympia, SoOptimus of Olympia, Women United of Thurston County, and Interagency Committee of State Employed Women, we are delighted to be here to recognize Equal Pay Day 2018, which obviously is today. We sincerely thank Thurston County for recognizing this important day through a county proclamation and for making pay equity a priority. Equal Pay Day is the symbolic day when women's earnings, which are at about 80% of men's earnings nationally, finally catch up to men's earnings from the previous year. In other words, women have to work an additional three months and 10 days to earn the same wages. Yes, the wage gap still exists. Women hold almost half of all jobs and earn the majority of college degrees, yet the typical women working full-time in Washington earns only roughly 77 cents to a man's dollar. The Equal Pay Act was passed over 50 years ago, but women, especially women of color, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. Asian women working full-time make about 90 cents of every dollar paid to their white male counterparts. White women make 82% of white male earnings nationally. Black and African-American women make 68%. Hispanic and Latina women make 62%. Native Ameri-- sorry, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Island women make 59%, and Native American women make 57%. This means that their Equal Pay Day is not April 10th, it's in November. To make the same earnings, these women must work one year plus 10 months and several days. In other words, equal payday for them is really equal pay year. Why should we care about this? A lifetime of lower pay means that women have less income to save for retirement and less income counted in Social Security or their pension benefit formula. Four in 10 mothers are the main source of income for their families, and nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security. Unequal pay hits families in the pocketbook and slows down our economy. The average Washington woman working full-time brings home almost $14,000 less than her male counterparts each year, and that keeps families strapped. It reduces spending in local businesses in Thurston County and helps explain why 18% of our state's children live in poverty. It also limits women's ability to invest in education or start a business and results in less retirement income and expenditures. The pay gap isn't simply a national issue, it affects us right here in Thurston County as well. Thurston County gender differences echo the national and state data with some estimates ranging from 77 to 82 cents for every dollar a man earns. This is a significant long-term problem for our community to solve. It has direct consequences for the Thurston County labor market, our regional economy, and our quality of life. Further wage inequity conflicts with our missions and our values of social equity, inclusion, and fairness. An Equal Pay Day proclamation is a good first step in acknowledging that unequal pay continues to be a challenge facing women, particularly women of color in our community. It will take all organizations and all clubs, municipalities, and businesses to bring about workplace and pay equity. So today, we thank Thurston County and invite you to continue to work toward pay equity for all. By doing so, you will strengthen the economy and the economic status and stability of all women, men, and children and families who call Thurston County and Olympia their home.
You bet. Very well said, thank you. Let's have a couple of questions or comments? We can read the question.
I guess I'd just like to say that here in Thurston County, at Thurston County Government, I believe that we do our utmost to make sure that we are fair. As far as I know, we're fair, and I would ask anyone out there that doesn't agree with that or has an example to bring it to our attention, and we will certainly see what we can do to make it fair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your commitment to paying attention to that and following it through the years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what, Doctor. 35 years in law enforcement, everything was contract, so it was fair, it was equal.
Right.
People weren't more equal than others. But I recognize with my mom and my sisters and my daughters-in-law and my daughter and two granddaughters, we better get this stuff sorted out.
Yes.
Quickly enough. So, thank you very much, and I'm going to repeat several of the staffs that you just mentioned as well.
Just applaud your efforts here today for YMCA. Is there any events that you have regularly that talk about this kind of issue that come to mind?
Well, our advocacy group meets regularly on this, and we're kind of building momentum, so I anticipate that we'll be having some more soon. Let me ask somebody else.
Go ahead.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, right. So, as I mentioned before, this is an issue that affects both, that affects all women, but particularly women of color. And so, I believe it's next month, we are doing a racial justice summit, so that would be a good time for the community to come around on issues of not just pay equity, but all kinds of other concerns that we have.
Yeah. Well, the county stands with YWCA in what you do, and we applaud you immensely, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Where is that summit going to be?
There.
Is it still being planned?
Determining that right now, yeah.
Okay.
Uh-huh, right.
Oh, very good.
We'll be sure to send on information to you.
Please, thank you.
Thanks.
Ready? This proclamation is National Equal Pay Day, whereas Thurston County recognizes that more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas, according to statistics released in 2016 by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, year-round, full-time working women earned only 82% of the earnings of year-round, full-time working men, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas, according to graduating to a pay gap, a 2012 research report by the American Association of University Women, AAUW, the gender gap, the gender pay gap is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling for factors known for, known to affect earnings such as occupation, hours worked, and college major. And whereas, in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which gives back to employees their day in court to challenge a pay gap, and now we must pass the Paycheck Fairness Act, which would amend the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, males in Thurston County have an average income that is 1.35 times higher than the average income of females, which is $52,270. And whereas, wage gaps by gender, race, and ethnicity persist, with white women making 82% of white male earnings nationally, black women making 68%, Hispanic and Latina women making 62%, and Native American women making 65%. And whereas, a lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement and less income counted into, or in a Social Security or pension benefit formula. And whereas, nearly four in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their households, and nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security. And whereas, a fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas, Tuesday, April 10th, symbolizes the time in 2018 when the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaims April 10th, 2018, as National Equal Pay Day and encourages all residents to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force and further encourages businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. Adopted this 10th day of April 2018, signed by your Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you.
Want to get a photo with you?
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Yeah. Okay. We've got one of these, I don't know where you. Proclamation, oh, next one. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Great stuff. So we have another presentation, and today we have the County Manager, not County Manager, but the 4-H Manager for Diana Ullery, and I'll let the County Manager do the introduction.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to bring to us, just come to the podium, Stephen Bramwell from the Washington State University Extension. And in return, he will outline the program and--
Hello, Stephen. Thank you, County Manager, and thank you, Board of County Commissioners. I just wanted to introduce Diana Ullery, just because there was a point or two she might not make in applauding her own work, and I wanted to do that and make sure that it was recognized. She's done excellent work for WSU Extension and the citizens of Thurston County. Diana was hired in 2014, in September of that year. She came to our, the position at WSU with a background in environmental education. And in 2017, her youth enrollment in 4-H was up 14% over 2016 and 46% over 2015. Diana has really brought the 4-H program a long ways in the last couple of years during her tenure. She's got great clubs, great youth, and great leadership from the community. I'd just like to mention as well, she does a very good job putting together out-of-school programming and not just club programming, meaning students who cannot typically participate in clubs have an opportunity to participate in those programs and thereby making the accessibility of her work more widely available to the citizens and the youth of Thurston County. My last two points, in 2017, Diana received an Achievement and Service Award from the National Association of Extension 4-H Agents, and she also received the Excellence in Urban 4-H Programming in the Western Region National Association for Extension 4-H Agents. And so Diana has been recognized regionally as well as nationally for the work that she does, and it's a great honor that we have her to serve for us in Thurston County. Welcome, Diana Ullery.
Yeah, Diana, come on up, yep. So, how's 4-H?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's, it has been a privilege to work with the amazing extension professionals that I've had the opportunity to work with, volunteers and community members, and I appreciate their acknowledgement of my work and as well, I appreciate yours. Last month, there was an article, a wonderful article, in Thurston Talk about one of our 4-H clubs. The club is Helping Hounds, and the leader is Erin Gaetan. And I thought you might enjoy hearing directly from one of our 4-H volunteers about what that club does and the kind of impact it has on our community. So I want to introduce Erin and her son Nate and their dog Jax.
Jack.
And I will let Erin report on what her club is doing and how they're interacting with our community.
Okay, come on over, Erin, and bring Jax in.
Hi, I'm Erin Gaetan, and I'm the leader of Helping Hounds. We're the newest of the five 4-H dog clubs in Thurston County, and this is my son Nate. Nate, do you want to introduce Jax and let them know about him?
So, this is Jax. He's a nine-year-old Rottweiler lab mix. He's very sweet, he's very social, he loves about everyone, and, and he loves to travel.
And long walks on the beach, right?
Yep.
Thanks, buddy.
Good job, Nate.
One of the things that our club has been able to do, and it's been able to do it because of the way 4-H is structured and Diana's openness to working with us and our flexibility, is accommodate kids of all abilities. We wanted to be, all of 4-H is inclusive, but we all know, or if you have special needs kids, you know, that on the ground, making it happen is another thing. And one of the lovely things about 4-H is that each club has a certain amount of flexibility to accommodate the members within it. So in our case, we have 20 kids in our club, I would say about half of whom have some sort of developmental difference. Autism is what brought us here, and, but also sensory processing differences and, and the like. And many of our typically developing members have siblings on the spectrum, so they come knowing that this is a place where we can create a community within our club, but also it gives us a chance to reach out to the community and serve instead of always being the recipients of other people's service. And to that end, one of the things that our club really likes to do is bring our dogs to the Hands-on Children's Museum, so we can share our dogs with the kids there and teach them a little bit about how to interact with dogs. Nate, can you tell them a little bit about what it, what we do when we go to the museum? Does Jax like going?
Yes. Jax loves going, and he loves little kids. He loves us about everyone he meets.
He does. We bring probably five or six dogs at a time. They put us in a room or outside, and children come up and interact with the dogs, and our kids are able to share what they know and what they love with the community, and we're really excited. We're going to be back, we've gone many times, and we're going back again in May, I think, the second weekend in May. So, you can look for us there if you have a kid who might like to pet a dog. We also get a lot of staff members mysteriously swinging by our room with dogs pretty frequently. But it's been a great thing. Last summer at the fair, Jax and Nate handled Jax, and Jax became a canine good citizen. And in a couple of weeks, Jax and I will be testing to become a therapy handling team. So, and Nate will be able then to go with us into other places and share with the community. Thank you.
Do you have questions or?
Oh, yeah.
Any comments?
Nate, you do a great job up there as representing what 4-H has to offer.
Thanks.
And I would like to say that youth are about 30% of our population, but they're 100% of our future, and we cannot make a better investment than investing in our youth. And I want to thank you very much for going the extra mile with these young people and doing all that you both do. Thank you very much.
And you, Nate, and Erin are great role models and mentors for, for many other people, along with Jax. But down at the Hands-on Museum, I'm picturing, and Nate, you can tell me if I'm right or wrong, you're getting a corn dog or a hot dog, and you're, Jax gets some of that, does he?
No.
No?
It's left to his own devices.
Okay. But thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
Sure, I just have a curious question, then we're going to do a photo. Was Jax with you as a pup, or did you get him later on in life? Tell us a little bit about that.
He was three years old.
How did he get here?
We got him from our shelter in Tacoma.
Oh.
He was, he was a pre-owned animal, so he had one owner before us.
We don't actually know how many owners he had.
Right.
But he's a pretty great dog.
But you got him at three years old, you said?
Yes, he was a rescue.
And how old is he now?
We think he's about nine.
Oh, wow, wow, okay. So if we brought Jax forward, could we put him in the front to get a photo?
Sure.
And have Jax? And all those. You got him over there? Are you up there? We have a tiny little gift for Erin and Nate. Diane, I know you got one of these, but I'm going to give one to Erin. And take my man, there you go. Now you got Jax to look at the photo, the camera. You got a treat.
Say hi, Jax.
Hi, Jax.
That'll get you thrown in jail someplace.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Okay. Okay, now I need, we're going to move into the portion where it's the opportunity for the public to address the board, and before I go forward, I need a piece of paper from Ramiro. So, this is the opportunity for the public to address the board, and there's three minutes. When I call your name out and I go down the list, first come, first served, in the sense of that, there'll be three minutes posted up on this clock to your right, my left, and it's a countdown clock, so you see three minutes to zero, and when it gets to zero, it makes this kind of microwave sound, it goes "pah." However, if you're midway through your thoughts or your sentence or whatever, I'll start asking you to finish up, but I want you to finish your thoughts and sentence because that's what we're here about, to hear you out. So just take that in mind, and then so when you come to the podium, for the record, say where you're generally in the county and your name, your first and last name for me, okay? So I have the, let me show you if I got this right. Okay, the first person is Juanita Torman. Torman, yeah? Hello, Juanita.
Hi there, I was really hoping Jen could stay and do this for me.
Jen could do it for you.
My name is Juanita Torman, I'm in Thurston County. I have a small business in Thurston County, and I have, I've been involved with the Thurston County Buyway Project from the development period to now, which is the existing Thurston County Agro-Tourism Advisory Committee. My purpose here today is to bring some attention to the difficult process of starting a small business or being an existing small business in Thurston County. I'm here because the process that allows us small business owners to be in compliance is stalled by the red tapes of bureaucracy. I'd like to address a permitting system. For a simple building permit, from a, from a simple permitting, building permit per barn to requiring a Group B permit because you have a dishwashing sink in a warming kitchen or being denied a septic approval because you have not completed a Group B permit approval process to land use permissions and being told you absolutely cannot continue business without these permits because it is unsafe for the public, and this is stifling. It makes it difficult to sometimes even impossible to be in compliance. So, what is the intent of the rule? Public safety. How do we achieve this? By being conscientious citizens, testing our water when required or necessary to do so, making sure fire safety has been addressed at a level we operate and how we operate. We are small, mostly seasonal businesses that simply want to continue to bring in the 3, 303.2 billion dollars that tourism brings to this county every year. We want to see fellow businesses thrive, increase the traffic on the bountiful buyway, and, and offer our community a piece of the pie. Our businesses support our community by drawing tourism, enhancing the economy, and providing more tax dollars to Thurston County. According to RCW 3670A11, the legislator grants flexibility to the county level to create, create opportunities for business development. Further, the legislator finds that rural counties must have the flexibility to retain existing businesses and allow them to expand. The legislator recognizes that not all business developments in rural counties require an urban level of service. Additionally, WAC 365196425 states that counties must include a rural element in their comprehensive plan. This element shall permit land uses that are compatible with the rural character of such lands and provide a variety of rural densities. Which brings me back to why I'm here. There are leniencies in the codes that allow flexibility to rural landowners and businesses at the county level. I am asking you to take these leniencies into consideration for the economic growth and expansion of rural Thurston County, to clear some of the red tape and allow citizens to give back to their communities. I am suggesting that there be a special provision in the permitting system that allows for small businesses to succeed. Allow landowners to be creative--
Go ahead, finish up.
--and their investment at the same time. Add to the revenue stream of Thurston County. Offer them a level of compliance that is affordable and obtainable. Consider the seasonal and part-time businesses as a separate entity from box stores, restaurants, hotels, and et cetera. Reduce the fees and required, or requirements so that, so that we too can be a part of the game, and it's a win-win for our community. Thank you so much for your time. I'm hoping that we can get your support on our, on our venture here, and, any questions?
Thank you so much for, for your words, though. Next person I have is Kerry Hart. Yeah, come on up, sir.
Well, thank you, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kerry Hart. I am a resident at Summit Lake, which is in Northwest County, and I believe that's in Commissioners Blake District. And I had really two questions for the Commissions, and you may not have to answer today, but it's an issue that I'd like to get resolved. Some time ago, the state mandated to all counties that discharge water into the sound to come up with a management plan, basically for all septic systems that do discharge. And as you're probably aware, many of that was kind of put on hold because of a difficulty in understanding how to fund that process. I was curious as to where we might be in that situation. As Summit Lake is one of the five districts within the county, in fact, because we drink the water out of the lake, we're a special district all to ourselves. So that's one issue that I'd like to at least bring before the Commission and see if we could get some clarification on that. Secondly, there seems to be a persistent rumor that the county is going to provide a municipal water system for all of Summit Lake, and I would suspect that is not high on the Commission's agenda at this point. So with that, I will say thank you for the opportunity to speak, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you for your words today, sir. So next I have on my list is Mr. Michael Wilson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you very much. My name is Michael Wilson. My address is 201 Carpenter Road in Lacey, Washington. I'm here today to speak about transportation, a transportation issue. In the coming decades, our society is going to see a significant increase in the number of people over 65 years of age. of people over sixty-five years of age, and transportation is just one of the many issues that will need to be looked at to deal with the needs in the future. A study published by the National Academy Press a few years ago entitled "TCRP 49: Using Public Transportation to Reduce the Economic, Social, and Human Costs of Personal Mobility" noted the lack of personal mobility has economic, social, and human costs such as higher unemployment, reduced tax revenue, greater welfare and medical costs, and limited social potential. Almost half of those without an automobile are persons sixty-five years of age and older, and of these, eighty-one percent are women. Twenty-three percent of full-time working mothers and almost sixty percent of part-time working mothers have non-traditional work hours. This reduces a woman's ability to join car pools or find appropriately scheduled transit operations. Today, we need to address the issue of veterans, and veterans are one group of people, along with the others, who are lacking in access to transportation services. A paper from the National Conference of State Legislatures notes, "By providing consistent and efficient access to medical appointments, states can save money by helping these individuals avoid costly ambulance trips or emergency room visits." Another study found that if one percent of total medical trips resulted in avoiding an emergency room visit, the state could save up to eleven dollars for each dollar spent in non-emergency medical transportation. Good planning today can reduce poverty, welfare costs, and help improve the environment by reducing vehicle emissions. I encourage you to take a look at this issue and the laws and regulations that govern it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your words today, too, sir. The next person I have on my list is Alan Acosta.
Thank you for having us, Commissioners. I am a Thurston County resident. I live in the city of Lacey. My name is Alan Acosta. I work for... I work with outreaches here in Thurston County, especially veteran outreaches. I represent Nine Line Services. I'm the program director there. We're 501. We also throw one of the largest Veterans Resource Fair here, this side of the Mississippi. One of the things that my partner there has addressed is transportation issues within our veterans' community here. We work weekly downtown Olympia, and one of the things that we've encountered, and it's one of the number-one issues that we have, is transportation services to the VA, American Lake, Seattle, and also to the Lacey Hub. So where we try to consolidate our efforts, we work in unison with these veteran services and within our network. So you have now a coalition of veteran services working within Thurston County, but one of our shortfalls is veteran transportation. These are things that... When a veteran needs to get up to American Lake, they have hardship whether, because it's such a long... Whether they're using the bus line, it's such a long commute down to veterans, American Lake, and also it extends majority of their day. Now they're not maximizing their day, which they can be doing to better themselves or get to other appointments to help integrate them to our community. So by solving and taking a look at this issue that we have here in Thurston County will definitely benefit our veterans in this community. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you for your words. And one question, though. Where is American Lake?
Lake what?
Lake what?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so the next person I have on my list is Mr. James Myers. Or Jim Myers.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is James Myers, and I'm here to express support for Ms. Tormann in regards to small businesses in rural agricultural areas of Thurston County. I served as Chair of the VSP, which is a county advisory kind of board, talking about ways to manage land, and as a result of that, I became aware of quite a few needs in the area. I presently serve also concurrently on the agrotourism board, and again, become familiar with other people's needs. I personally have run a couple businesses in the area. One is an agrotourism-type business, and I've personally experienced some challenges, and I find that regulation has impacted my business to the point where it may not still be a viable business. I'm not sure. I had some health issues recently, and that's interfered in my ability to continue working with the county. However, with my experience in the past, I'm simply saying that Ms. Tormann has some very good salient points, and I would appreciate taking a good look at that, and I think three minutes in the afternoon might be a great introductory show, but I think as far as really being serious about it, perhaps ag tourism, you know, might get a little better go than that, and I hope in the future you would do that. So thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for coming today and your words today, too, sir. You bet. So next on the list is, I think it's Paul Wella... Wills?
Windler.
Windler, I'm so sorry. Yeah, come on up, sir. Good to see you. You have the floor. Go ahead.
My name is Paul Windler. I'm also here to support Jim and Juanita. I...
There you go.
Sorry. I share similar... I'm in the agrotourism district, and we're going through the building process, and there's a lot of red tape that we're working through, and it's just been a tough experience. And again, it's like Jim, we're hoping to continue, but we're not sure we're gonna be able to continue. And so, again, I just... It's like Jim said, this is a good starting point, but I think we need to move forward and really get serious about some points here to help us and agrotourism, other people in the agrotourism district, to prosper and utilize the community and provide tourist activities. So, that's it. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you for your words, too. So that completes the people who've signed up and hit yes on there. If there's anybody else in the audience, just raise your hand, and I'll bring you forward, and you can talk, and I'll sign you. Hey, come on up. What do we got here? Hey, you can pull it off of the thing.
No, they're talking.
There you go, just like that. And state your name and where you're from in the county.
My name is Tony Cole. I'm a resident of Olympia here. I was born and raised in Washington. I'm a Cowlets Tribal Native from the Pacific Northwest, and I've been working with a really dedicated group of individuals on addressing the homeless crisis, which has afflicted Thurston County really heavily. And my son, Kellen, here, has a few words that he'd like to say about that as well, so...
Kellen, okay.
My name is Kellen Horn, and I'm studying and writing about the homeless crisis in Thurston County. People all over Olympia and Washington in general are becoming homeless. Studies have shown that over 3.5 million people become homeless. That is an issue. The sad thing is there's a few... The sad thing is that there's just a few reasons of people becoming homeless. One, no job will accept them to be an employee because of their record. Two, because they have serious surgeries that cost a lot of money with not enough money to pay house bills. Then getting kicked out and on the streets. Then they're on the streets until kindness, a miracle, or both come their way. People like my dad and bunny come along to open a homeless shelter, but it's not enough. There are a lot of homeless people in America, and only some states are trying to help. Most rich people shun them when they live in big cities like Las Vegas and Hollywood. I think we should put up more homeless camps and give homeless people a place to stay until they can get back up on their feet. Like my dad has always said, "Everybody deserves a second chance at living life as free as we do."
Great. And Kellen, did you write?
Yeah.
That's good. We have a little token of our appreciation for coming forward today. Kellen, could you come up to the podium for me real quick?
Kellen? You can go there. You're doing honorable civic work, and there you go, there's a Thurston County county attorney buddy. Come on.
All right. Thank you so much.
Fifty-five seconds. I just wanted to take a moment to point out, there's a lot of just amazing people and amazing organizations doing work to address the homeless crisis in Thurston County, and I think that in the future, with some coordination that's been talked about by the county, some really positive and impactful changes can be made, and literally lives can be saved. So I thank you guys for your time and your efforts.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you for your words, and thank you, Kellen, for coming up today.
Yeah.
No problem. No problem. You can do that again. You got it.
Yes.
Okay. So that completes... If there's anybody else, just by showing a hand, raise your hand, and I'll bring you to the podium. If not, that concludes our portion of the opportunity for the public to address the board, and I'm gonna move on with the agenda. And so with that, I have the County Manager's Update. I don't have any updates for you. No updates, okay. So that brings us to the next item, which is the Consent Items, items A through F. And I'll just ask, is there a motion to approve the consent items A through F?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Consent Items A through F.
Second.
It's been moved to second to approve Consent Items A through F. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Moving to our Department Items, which is, first up is the Public Works, which is item number four on the agenda. So it's a quick claim deed to Washington State Department of Transportation, and I'll let Mr. Sissin... Sissins take it over from here.
Thank you, Commissioners. As part of the State Route 510 and Meridian Road Roundabout Project, the Washington State Department of Transportation, WashDOT, has requested in Thurston County provide a quick claim deed for all county rights away within the project. When WashDOT constructs a project requiring right-of-way owned by a local jurisdiction, they request the local jurisdiction transfer the property pursuant to RCW 4712040, acquisition of property from a political subdivision. Upon completion of the project, WashDOT will quickclaim deed any property not necessary to operate and maintain their project roundabout back to Thurston County via turnback agreement that will be signed at a later date. The transfer of the property to WashDOT allows for the construction of the roundabout to improve safety and congestion in a busy intersection. The property to be transferred back to Thurston County is noted on Sheets Four and Five of the map that I have provided. The transfer of the property is consistent with the county's strategic plan to meet, then meets the external goals of environmental and sustainable resources, preserve and enhance our physical environment, natural resources, and economic vitality and opportunity, promote and advance sustainable economic vitality and opportunity for all our citizens.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Sissin?
Thank you very much.
Anything?
No.
Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, move to execute the quick claim deed to the Washington State Department of Transportation for the State Route 510 and Meridian Road Roundabout Project.
Second.
It's been moved to second as stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and your motion carries. Aye, and your motion carries. There you go. I didn't know if I got it out there. Okay, good. Thank you, sir. So the next item is the resolution for a call to seal bids for various asphalt operations throughout the county, and I'll have Vasili Barot to come up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Public Works is requesting permission from the board to advertise a call for sealed bids for supplying various asphalt materials, and that would be for the road operation This will be used for the annual road maintenance. The purpose of this bid is to secure the best unit cost for each material, since relatively small quantities are needed each time for each road. And are there any questions?
No.
No, sir.
All right, is there a motion for sealed bids?
Move to approve the resolution and call for sealed bids for furnishing a supply of various kinds of asphalt materials to the Department of Public Works for annual road maintenance activities.
Second.
It's been moved to second as stated. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries. Thank you, Vasili.
Thank you.
The next item we have up for the Public Works is a resolution to add Independence Road to a realignment project, and we have Matt Unzleman to give us the background.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Public Works has a project scheduled for later this summer or early fall to realign a 700-foot portion of Independence Road between the Lewis County Line and Michigan Hill Road. County crews closed this portion of the road earlier this year when high river flows, Shale's River flows began washing away the embankment or roadway material that is supporting the roadway. The project includes shifting the roadway ten to fifteen feet away from the Shale's River, as well as planting vegetation between the river and the new roadway to help prevent further erosion. This work is planned to be completed using county forces, and the estimated cost is expected to be around $300,000. State law requires that all projects that are completed using county forces need to be part of the county's annual road program that is submitted to the County Road Administration Board each year. This plan was previously approved by the Ward of County Commissioners last October. So what Public Works is here today is requesting permission to amend that plan to add this Independence Road project to the 2018 annual road construction program.
Questions to Matt?
I guess I just have a quick question. As you move forward to repair this particular section of roadway, you talk about setting it back maybe from the river another ten or fifteen feet. Is there also gonna be some kind of a barrier or like riprap or something put in place so this doesn't happen again twenty years down the road?
Good question. I'm getting good at answering this one, I hope. So this is the immediate fix. So anytime you're doing work on a riverbank such as the Shale's River, there's a couple things that come into play. One, it's usually really expensive. Two, it takes a long time to get our environmental permits. So this is the immediate fix. We would need to shift the roadway over to accommodate the permanent repairs anyway, so this is just a way to do some of the work sooner than the long-term permanent work that would need to be done down the road. Hopefully not twenty years. Permits are a pain in the butt, but they're usually only five years painful.
I guess I would point out for the viewing public that we in government seem to face the same restrictions and bureaucracy that you in business face, only we face it to a greater extent, and we don't always agree with it. And our sympathies are with those folks that have to put up with this on a regular basis as we do as well. And thank you very much, Matt, for bringing that to our attention.
And we do appreciate you understanding this, too.
Thank you.
Yes, and it is a pain in the neck.
Sorry, sorry.
No, no, no. It's all right. It's all right. I can't say it, but you perhaps can.
No, I shouldn't say it.
But I saw an aerial view of how the river's changed course and eroded the bank and endangers the road, and that was very telling. Is that online, on the county website, so people can see that?
Yeah, we have a project webpage. I know what you're talking about. We did a... Actually, the Sheriff's Department went out there, and they did a drone flight along the river.
UAS, I think it's called?
Yeah, unmanned aircraft system. I don't know if we're allowed to say drone or not, but... So they were able to fly up and down the river, and you... The picture's crystal clear. You can see where the bank has begun to slip off. I do think we should get that up on the website.
It was very telling. And currently, you have it restricted down to one lane, don't we, right there in there?
We do have it restricted to one lane. It'll be one lane until the project gets completed later this summer.
Yeah, and this is critical to the folks that live out that way and travel that Independence Road.
I'm glad you got to see the video, though.
That was really... That was pretty cool, yeah.
I mean, there's so much future opportunity with these systems.
But I want the community to be able to see that.
Sure.
Yeah, picture tells a lot.
Maybe you can send us a copy of the video.
Yeah. All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the resolution to add the Independence Road Realignment Project, CRP number 61517, to the 2018 annual road program.
Second.
It's been moved to second as stated. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So now I have the next department, which is the Department of Central Services, contract awarded for Thurston County Sheriff's Office referring to scheduling time management system, and how Martin Casey did. Give us some background.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. After a competitive solicitation that drew four vendor proposals, the sheriff's office has selected in time as a scheduling and time management system to replace the current tell-staff system. This is one of the first projects moving forward under the county's recently developed Long-Term IT Applications Replacement Plan. Central Services Project Manager Scott Flores worked with sheriff's staff and with partners in... in the auditor's office and human resources to define several hundred business requirements, and we really appreciate all the time and effort that went into developing the request for proposals, as well as for evaluating and scoring all of the proposals that came in. The acquisition of In Time is estimated at $64,470, which is well under the approved product cost and deployment budget authority that had been originally set for the tell-staff system replacement. This will include up to 250 licenses for the product, usable for both scheduling and time management functions, a customized data export, secure data hosting, and professional services work for configuration and training. The annual maintenance costs, starting in 2019, will be $43,500 annually plus tax, and will be paid for in Central Services rates charged to the Sheriff's Office through our internal service rates. So we are seeking your approval at this time to move forward with the contract award, and I know there's representatives from both Central Services IT, as well as the Sheriff's Office here today, if you have any further questions.
Any questions about time management? Sheriff's Office?
No. Yes, I do. In time of scheduling and time management, is that a system that's used by other law enforcement in the county?
In the county? I'm not sure of that. There might be.
City of Olympia.
City of Olympia? Yes.
There's various levels in which they have a.
Can you come to the, please?
Oh, please step to the mic, Mr. Sheriff.
Entertain yourself, Mr. Under Sheriff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. County Manager, my name's Tim Brannan from Thurston County Under Sheriff. How are you doing today?
Fine, thank you.
Great. There are the three local agencies at various levels have the In Time system that we're currently seeking to implement within the Sheriff's Office itself, along with, I think it's over 250 law enforcement agencies nationally. And I know for a fact that Orange County Sheriff's Office down in California, which is one of the largest, they just implemented the system as well. And we believe it's a proven system that can help monitor what we do for any of the timekeeping, scheduling, monitoring our staff when it comes to overtime rest periods, especially when it comes to officer safety and deputy safety out there, as well as accountability and accounting, and helping reduce some of the duplication that we have currently with the tell-staff system itself.
Well, thank you. And we shouldn't have to put a price on safety, but it's there.
This is just a small piece of that.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to authorize the Central Services Director to negotiate and execute a contract for In Time Scheduling and Time Management System for the Thurston County Sheriff's Office totaling $64,470, plus applicable sales tax.
Second.
It's been moved to second as stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and your motion carries.
Thank you.
So next we have, the next department we have is the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and we have Chris Hawkins to represent. He is from the Public Health and Social Services, right? But he's going to talk about DSHS, the Behavioral Health Recovery Prevention and Wellness Initiative Agreement, right?
Correct. Thank you, Chair Blake, and good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Chris Hawkins. I'm the Community Engagement Evidence and Partnerships Program Manager for Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, and here to ask for your approval of a contract that's being offered to our department to be serving as the fiscal agent and the coalition support for a couple of projects here in Thurston County under what's called the Community Prevention and Wellness Initiative. This has been in existence for a few years now, working in the Bucota-Tonino area as part of the Bucota-Tonino Healthy Action Team, supporting that coalition's efforts. And then another community will be named soon as a second community here in Thurston County on this contract. This would provide our department resources to support the coalitions in that Bucota-Tonino area and the additional community aimed at substance use prevention here in Thurston County among young people. So this is really working very closely with the school districts in those communities, and working with a coalition of community organizations and members, parents, teachers, staff of the local government there, to identify ways to better accomplish that prevention mission. So we do a variety of projects and interventions in connection with this, helping those communities. That includes our Nurse Family Partnership being one of the services that our department provides specifically under this agreement. So we're looking for your approval on a contract that would go until the end of June 2019 for approximately $248,000 to carry out that purpose.
Is there a motion?
Yes, no comment.
No comment?
I don't think I have a comment. Go ahead, thank you. You do a lot of good work for us, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chris. I move to approve the Washington State DSHS Division of Behavioral Health and Recovery Prevention Services Agreement to carry out fiscal agent and coalition coordination for Bucota, Tonino, and other, another Thurston County community to be named, for the total maximum amount of $248,441 for the duration of March 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019, and to authorize the Public Health and Social Services Department Director to sign the agreement, as well as future amendments, that do not change the dollar amount or duration of the agreement by more than 25%.
Second.
It's been moved to second as stated. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so now we're at the point where I have the Commissioners and County Managers items, and we have Robin Campbell.
That's it.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. To set a public hearing on the budget amendment, number five, for the 2018, 2017, 2018 biennial budget. Robin?
Thank you, Commissioner. So this afternoon, as you've said, I am here to ask you to set a public hearing for an amendment to the county's 2018 budget. Offices and departments have submitted amounts that, where the total requests add up to increased revenue in the general fund of 1.7 million and increased expenditures of 4 million. Other fund revenue is increased by 14.6 million and expenditures by 13.2 million. And then carryforward projects, which are projects that were begun but not completed in 2017, would increase this year's revenue by 228,000 and expenditures by 7.7 million. And again, these are projects that were planned but not completed last year, and there's money available in the fund for these projects. The board has reviewed these requests in detail in open public meetings on April 5th and April 10th, and the board has made some preliminary decisions. In accordance with state law, RCW 36.40.100, the board's supplemental appropriation amount would be published in each of the two weeks before the public hearing, and details will be available on the county's budget website. So I am requesting that you set the public hearing on the budget for Tuesday, May 1st, Tuesday, May 1st, at 3:00 at the right hearing in this room, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
I don't have any new questions. We had a lot of questions this morning. If the public is interested, I'm sure they can check in on YouTube, I believe it is. And I think the county manager could explain to folks how to get involved, I guess, in that regard at some point. But we had in-depth discussions about this this morning, amongst other things.
That's great.
No, no, I don't.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve a resolution setting a public hearing for May 1, 2018, at 3:00 p.m. at the Thurston County Courthouse, Building 1, in Room 280, to receive public comment on budget amendment number five of the 2017-2018 biennial budget.
Second.
It's been moved to second as stated. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll just turn real quickly before we go to the public hearing, and hear the county managers, and then we'll see what goes from there.
Thank you, Commissioners. Let me walk you through very quickly to your schedule in the upcoming week, in this combined schedule where at least two Commissioners are present. You may have individual appointments on your individual calendars, and those will not be part of my report. Beginning here in less than a minute, you have a public hearing where you consider a public testimony on precinct, proposed change in precinct boundaries. Also, at 3:30 this afternoon, you will have your regular Board of Health meeting. Tomorrow, Wednesday, April 11th, at noon, you have lunch meeting with your appointed directors. And tomorrow afternoon, you have a briefing from the Capitol Land Trust, which starts at 2:00 in the afternoon. Thursday, April 12th, 9:00 in the morning, you have your monthly update from Superior Court. At 10:00 on Thursday, the 12th, you have a briefing, follow-up briefing, on the options to implement passport services here in the county. And at 10:00 in the afternoon, I'm sorry, 9:30, I'm going to get. Yes, at 10:30 in the morning on April the 12th, you will have a briefing of what you consider potential prevention activities related to the treatment sales tax, as we call the TST funding. Friday, April 13, Commissioner Hutchins and Commissioner Blake will be reviewing the Thurston Nation Behavioral Health Organization Agenda. And in the afternoon, 2:30, you will have a closed session where you will have a quasi-judicial discussion on appeal that you heard last week. And at 3:30, at 3:00 in the afternoon, you will have the Jail Population Crisis Action Team, where all the law and justice partners will be part of the discussion with the objective as to how to reduce jail population here in the county. Moving to next week, Monday, April 16, at 3:00 in the afternoon, you will have the Thurston Tribes Coordinating Council, and then we'll come back here on next Tuesday, April 17, where you review the agenda for that day. That's all I have for you.
Any questions of the county manager?
No.
No, I do not.
Any other comments or question in general?
No.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the Board of County Commissioners Meeting of April 10, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved to second to adjourn, April 10, 2018. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned. Good afternoon, this is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners for April 10, 2018. Today, we're conducting a public hearing, and let me do the introductions real quick. To my left is Commissioner Gary Edwards. To my right is John Hutchins. And I'm Commissioner Bud Lake, the Chair of the Board this year. Today, here's a public hearing to change the precinct boundaries and update county code to reflect precinct boundary changes and update the county code of the county commissioner district legal description. That's a lot, but we'll get through that. So the purpose of it is to have a hearing to give the opportunity for the public to provide any comments on the proposed 2018 election precinct maintenance plan reflecting annexations by the cities of Lacey and Tomwater and other miscellaneous changes. So we have a sign sheet in the back, and I'll see, has anybody signed in on that sheet there as far as, you know, Romero?
Yeah.
Nobody's signed in. Okay, so we'll just move forward with it, but the rule would be that we have three minutes for anybody to testify, and you would state your name and where you're from in the county. So with that in mind, I'll open up the public hearing, and I'll ask the auditor, Mary Hall, to come back and give us a little bit of background and see where we go with this as far as the precinct boundary changes. Mary?
My name is Mary Hall, Thurston County Auditor, and we're in the process of doing our annual precinct maintenance. Every year, due to city annexations or other factors, we're required to make small adjustments to our precinct boundaries, and today, we're here to present the changes that we are proposing for this year. As you mentioned, the changes are in the city of Lacey, there are three changes, one in the city of Tomwater due to an annexation, we have one precinct consolidation, and one boundary improvement. So when annexations happen, we adjust our precinct legal descriptions to ensure that we're complying with state law. So we've posted all of this information on our website, on Thurstonvotes.org, and if anybody has any questions, they can certainly call our office at 360-786-5408. And Tony Wiki on my staff is going to lead you through the presentation and show you these precinct changes. So I will go ahead and turn that over to Tony.
Okay, great.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Aye. Tony?
Tony Wiki, I work in Thurston County Elections Division. These precinct changes are the result of three annexations in Lacey, one in Tomwater, and then, as Mary said, a couple of boundary improvements and precinct consolidation. So we'll go ahead and go through these. Currently, we have 285 precincts in Thurston County. No changes can be made 14 days prior to filing week, filing for office, and that's why we have kind of a short window for these things. Every voting precinct has to lie within a single legislative or county legislative district or congressional district. You can't be split by any of those boundaries. So here's an overview map of the areas in which we're working for this time. Most of it's in the northern part of the county. First one we'll look at is the city of Lacey North Thurston School Annexation. This is the annexed area. It's out near the Hawks Acres precinct, and it's, there's no houses there, no voters live within that area. We're proposing that that annexed area just merge into the Lacey 46 precinct. Our next annexation is a city of Lacey Martinway East Annexation. Two voters reside within the annexed area. This annexation area came out of this, our Skokomish precinct. If you look, there is a purple line, and that is a legislative district boundary, so that is the ledge two and ledge 22 boundary. So this annexation is on the other side of the legislative boundary from the rest of Lacey, which forces us to create a new precinct for that, because we can't cross the boundaries. So we will be creating Lacey 52 in our proposal, which will have a total of two voters. Someday, when they change those boundaries, we'll hopefully be able to merge that into the rest of Lacey. Our next one is the Lacey Cujo Park Annexation. There's zero voters in the annexed area. This one, there is a blue line that you'll see there, and that is the Commissioner District Boundary between Commissioner one and two, so it's dividing the annexed area. So the area to the east of the Commissioner District Boundary, we're proposing to merge that into Lacey 42, and the area on the west side of that Commissioner District Boundary, again, is a standalone area, so we will be creating another precinct there, which would be, it would be Lacey 53. Also, in that annexed area to the east of the Commissioner District Boundary, we, it's taking a big chunk out of the Tolme precinct, and we would like to move the parts to the east and west of the annexation up into Hawks Acres, and then that small area down below would remain the Tolme precinct. I think Lacey has plans for more annexations in that area eventually. Our next one is the Tomwater Little Rock Road Annexation. This is, was a county island that they annexed along Little Rock Road. It's out there by Costco and the Home Depot in that area. They annexed the Simmons Number Nine precinct, so basically, it's gone, and we're going to ask that that be removed from the county code. The northern part, we would move into Tomwater 10, and the southern part would move into Tomwater 11. There's power lines are dividing the precincts there. Our next one, this is the precinct consolidation. It's in the southeast area of the county, or more east than south. It's University North and University South precinct. That's the precincts as they currently exist. Our proposal would be to change the name to University and combine those two precincts together. Gives us a voter total of around 750 voters, which is an optimal amount for election administration And our last one we have is Hartwood and Marvin. It's a boundary improvement between the two precincts. Currently, the blue line represents part of the Hartwood precinct, and there's railroad tracks dividing that from the rest of Hartwood. We would propose to move that into Marvin. Hartwood is an area that's growing rapidly, so it helps us with keeping the voter total at a more manageable level within that precinct, and also. And also, it moves that area into the rest of the neighborhood that it shares with the rest of Marvin precincts. So it's a lot more convenient for the voters all in the same neighborhood. And I believe our proposed results, we would end up with the same amount of precincts, our 285 precincts. Approximate voters affected, the majority of these are in that combined precinct, the ones where we would, the University North and South, 1,128 voters affected in total. Two voting precincts and descriptions added, Lacy 52, Lacy 53. Two voting precincts repealed, University South and Simmons Number Nine. One voting precinct name change, that would be University North to University. And 10 voting precinct boundaries that are being adjusted. And nine legal descriptions amended. And the three Commissioner legal descriptions amended to take into account the new precincts and the repealing of those other two precincts. And that's all I have.
All right. Any questions? Tony, I'm here. Are you ready?
Tony, how many years do you have in the Auditor's Office?
About 15 years with the elections.
So I would just submit, this gentleman knows what he's doing. So if the audience didn't get it all, he's readily available there at Mary's shop at Thurston County Auditor's Office.
Absolutely, and all this information's also available online.
And thank you very much for your succinct presentation.
All right, thank you.
No, thank you, Tony.
All righty, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved to second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. It was the pleasure of the Board to continue on, or you want to do more now?
Because of the excellent presentation, I would like to just move forward with amending the...
Okay, adopt it.
Adopting today.
As would I, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt the proposed legal description and precinct boundary changes. Two new precincts with two new legal descriptions, 10 precincts with boundary line adjustments, updating nine legal descriptions, repealing two precincts and legal descriptions, and one precinct name change, and adopt the proposed legal description for County Commissioner District Number One, District Number Two, and District Number Three.
Second.
It's been moved to second and stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Any other final comments or questions?
Thank you, Mary.
Very complicated, thank you.
And staff.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn this public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved to second to adjourn. We are adjourned.